Yeah, it's really nice.
Nice to hear. Very happy for you. Thanks truly. I know that we gotta let Tom get up here.
Of course.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock and I will hereby call our city commission meeting to order. I'd like to ask you all to please rise and at this time I'd like to recognize the Honorable Judge Robert Lee who will come forward to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Judge. And ladies and gentlemen, I'd ask that you please remain standing. Today is the two-year anniversary of the Pulse massacre in Orlando and so as we often like to take a moment of reflection after the pledge to remember tragedies, I'd like to also ask that you please remember the triumphs. We are honoring Stonewall this week and Pride Month in our community and across the nation and the LGBT community has faced triumphs and tragedies and some of those have been horrific, we've lost lives, others have been monumental and in this month we've had marriage equality decisions come down from our nation's highest court. So as a community struggles for its own equality, I just ask that you take a moment and reflect upon that and those who have sacrificed for that. Thank you, please proceed. Our clerk would proceed with the roll call.
Commissioner Carson?
Here.
Commissioner Green?
Here.
Commissioner Newton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Here.
Mayor Resnick?
Thank you very much. And at this time rather than me, Commissioner Green, would you do us the honors of welcoming our guests?
I would like to welcome you to tonight's meeting and thank you for participating in our local government. I wanted to especially mention that we're honored to have in addition to Judge Lee, Heather Brinkworth, the Vice Chair of the Broward County School Board, and John Fiore, former mayor of the city. So again, welcome.
Thank you Commissioner and thank you all for being here. At this time colleagues, are there any additions, changes, or deletions to the agenda as it stands? Commissioner Carson?
Vice Mayor, I'd like to add to new business a moment of discussion about a city policy for leisure services, et cetera, on anti-bullying.
Okay, without objection. Colleagues, anything else from anyone? No? I will just add for your own edification, I'm gonna add item be under proclamations, it'll be a quick presentation to our library. All right. Saying nothing further, we will proceed then into the proclamations. Ladies and gentlemen, as I mentioned earlier, we are celebrating Pride Month and of course Stonewall in our community and so I have proclamations to present to two important organizations and so I will read the proclamations first and then make the presentation accordingly. Whereas during LGBT plus lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender Pride Month, we celebrate victories that have affirmed freedom and fairness and we recommit ourselves to completing the work that remains. And whereas we acknowledge the significance of the events at the Stonewall Inn and Bar in New York in June of 1969 that became a catalyst for the LGBT plus civil rights movement. And whereas Wilton Manners is a diversely populated community where many LGBT residents have chosen to call home, many places around the globe are not as open-hearted as LGBT people face ridicule, persecution, arrest, and punishment as extreme as death. And whereas the city of Wilton Manners proudly stands alongside all those who fight for LGBT rights, those who have fought for strengthened laws against violence towards LGBT Americans, taken action to prevent bullying and harassment and prohibited discrimination in housing, workforce, and healthcare. And whereas the definition of pride is a feeling of honor and self-respect, a sense of personal worth, one antonym of pride is shame. And whereas Wilton Manners is proud to serve as a community and example for the entire country where everyone can be proud of who they are and no one has to feel ashamed because they happen to be straight, gay, bisexual, transgender, or any other sexual orientation or gender identity. And whereas we proudly celebrate the 49th anniversary of Stonewall and thank the many activists and friends that made days like today possible, now therefore the city of Wilton Manners, Florida hereby proclaims the month of June as LGBT Pride Month and Saturday, June 16th as Stonewall Pride Day in the city of Wilton Manners and assigned by myself for this evening's presentation. So at this time, I'd like to ask the Pride Center's CEO, Robert Boo, and also the Stonewall Library and Archives Director and Executive Director, Chris Rudezal, come forward and will present that to you.
That's why we're in the back.
You were helping me.
Yeah.
Do you want to say anything?
You both want to do so.
I just wanted to say thank you. As Stonewall National Museum and Archives celebrates 45 years this year of preserving and sharing the history of the LGBTQ community, we are proud to do so in Wilton Manners and Fort Lauderdale. Today, pride gives us the opportunity to celebrate our community as Justin said, but we can't forget the purpose behind the action nor stop after June 30th. Pride is about recognizing that inherent benefit that diversity can bring to our communities that oppression and discrimination is still prevalent and that we must continue to stand up against it. And we are proud to do so with all of you in this community, setting an example of how that should be in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll bring forward Mr. Robert Boo who will say a few words on.
Sorry, I wasn't as prepared as Mr. Rudezal, having prepared remarks, but Robert Boo, CEO of the Pride Center, and I am proud to also announce that as of June 25th, this will be the 25th anniversary of the Pride Center providing vital services and programs to the community here in South Florida. Who would have imagined back in 1993 when our founder Alan Schubert started to have this conversation in his home and many of you may have been around for that and never would have guessed that in 25 years, we would have this five and a half acre campus with nine other nonprofits providing services and meeting the needs of our community and trying to reduce the spread of HIV, which was just recently announced that Miami-Dade and Broward County again are the number one and two counties in the country for new HIV infections. So on behalf of the Board of Directors, staff, and volunteers, thank you very much for the proclamation. It's very kind and very sweet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And ladies and gentlemen, our next presentation is a little bit different. I came across this book recently called Pride: The Story of Harvey Milk and the Rainbow Flag and inside of this book, one of Wilton Manners' own residents, Mr. Stuart Milk, the nephew of Harvey Milk, has a little inscription that says, "This book tells the history that all children will cherish and that will inspire the next generation of hope givers, our world's youth." And the book states that on June 25th, 1978, history was made when a new flag was unfurled in San Francisco. From that moment forward, the flag and its rich beaming colors of the rainbow would serve as a symbol of hope and pride for the millions of LGBT individuals across the world. And in the words of Harvey Milk, "You have to give them hope." And so tonight, from my, from me, on behalf of the commission, I'm going to make a presentation to both the Wilton Manners Library and the Stonewall Library and Archives to add to their respective collection for our children, to give them hope and to remind them that these colors mean that you are welcome in Wilton Manners and beyond. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Rudezal and our Library Director to come forward, please.
Opportunity for photograph, what?
Similar, similar to the. Absolutely. You want to get this?
Yes, that would be great.
I think we just got close out.
Yeah, we just got.
It was faster.
All right. Moving right along, presentations. This time, I'd like to call forward our School Board Vice Chair, Heather Brinkworth, to provide us with an update on the School Board's Smart Bond projects.
Good evening and thank you all for having me this evening. Before I start with the smart update, just a couple of things that are, that are important, I think, for the community to know. First, I want to thank Chief Police Paul O'Connell for participating in the Broward League of City School and Community Public Safety Task Force. As you all know, our district suffered, our county, our community suffered a huge tragedy on February 14th and it is through the support of the community, it is through leaders like Chief O'Connell to come together and talk about the issue and bring solutions. And so just yesterday, the School Board had a meeting to discuss the path forward for providing an SRO or a safety officer at all district schools. And originally, the school district voted not to participate in the Guardian program. And yesterday during our workshop, we had a conversation about reconsidering that decision and looking to participate in the Aaron Feis Guardian Program as outlined in Senate Bill 7026, in the event that a municipal partner cannot continue to participate with their portion of providing an SRO. We are required by law as a school district to have an SRO or a school safety officer on every campus by the beginning of the school year next year and it, we have not been funded appropriately to do that. So we are not looking to arm, I wanted to make this very clear to the commission and to the community that's listening, we are not looking to arm classroom teachers or staff at a school that has another role. We are looking to have a job description that hires a person for this particular, they will be an armed school safety guard. It is not our first choice, we would much rather have certified law enforcement, but we are looking to narrow that to retired or former law enforcement or retired former military. So I just wanted to give that update because that's a conversation that we had yesterday at the board. Today, we approved a contract with Safe Havens International, which is a company that is doing a security and risk assessment for all of our schools within the district. And the first phase begins immediately and it will be a review of the physical buildings of all of our campuses across the district. And then Phase Two will be in the fall, they will visit each campus when school is in session to see the flow of how students move throughout the campus, the protocols and how they're followed throughout the day and they'll provide feedback to the district. This is an independent consultant firm that we've hired, contracted with to do this. And obviously, safety and security are of utmost importance. We can't do the job of teaching and learning without our students and our staff members feeling safe. And so we are actively pursuing everything we possibly can and we encourage, you know, the conversation with commissions like yourself to talk about partnerships in the ways that we can accomplish that goal. I wanted to, I'll leave you a copy of a letter that went out to all families within the school district from the superintendent on June 1st. It is on our website at browardschools.com, under the blue bar or in the featured news section. And it provides families with an update about safety and security measures and the plans going forward. And I'll leave a copy of that with you here this evening if you'd like to post it or make it available to your community. With regard to specifically the smart update for Wilton Manners Elementary and then I wanted to talk a little bit about Sunrise Middle and Fort Lauderdale High School because I know your community students attend there. Wilton Manners Elementary is in the process of developing their ballot for their $100,000 choice money and each school through this process received $100,000 that they, as a community, decide how they would like to spend. So they're in the process of developing that ballot. It is something that happens through the school advisory committee, they have a conversation about what the needs are at the school, what they think the $100,000 would best be spent on and it is completely a community-driven decision, the district does not drive that decision whatsoever. So some schools do something about a playground, others do something about adding more technology, it's definitely up to the community and what they're looking to do. The primary renovations at Wilton Manners Elementary are 40% through the design process and that includes the building envelope improvements, which would be roofing and exterior fire alarm and HVAC improvements. And that's 40% through design. And in the fall of 2017, last year, the School Board expedited all of the single point of entries for every single school within the district. And so what we did was we moved those projects forward, we allocated the budget forward so that we could go ahead and start. Single point of entry at Wilton Manners Elementary is 25% through design and in the letter that the superintendent provided on June 1st, he indicated that all single point of entries across the district will be completed either by the end of this year, 2018, or the first quarter of 2019. And those are expedited over what they were originally scheduled to be through the smart program. It's something that we had done prior to the incident and I'm certainly glad that we did. They have received 100% of their music allocation, 432 instruments have been received at Wilton Manners Elementary School and they have also received 100% of their technology, 222 computer devices have been received at their school. For Sunrise Middle School, they are 35% through their implementation of their school choice enhancements, which means they've already chosen their $100,000 spend and they're 35% through getting them. They've chosen a fabric awning for as students enter in the morning into the cafeteria area, projectors, two-way radios, outdoor benches, conference tables and chairs, a digital marquee so that the community can be informed as they drive by with a digital marquee, and a cafeteria sound system. I have seen some of those things already in place when I visited the school. Their primary renovation design phase is 90% complete and that includes electrical improvements, building envelope improvements, fire sprinklers, HVAC improvements, and security and safety upgrades. And I'm happy to tell you that their single point of entry is 95% complete. I have been in it. If you haven't visited there, there's a new way to enter the school, which is much different from how we entered before, through the double doors where we had to wait for someone to let us in. So I think that's going to be a great improvement to the school. Their music allocation is 100% complete with 56 instruments being received and their technology is 100% complete with 429 computer devices received at that school. And Fort Lauderdale High School is 15% in the implementation phase for the $100,000 choice money. They have chosen patio tables with umbrellas, digital marquee, golf carts, and digital scoreboard table. That was what the community chose for their particular school. Their design phase for their primary renovations is 90% complete, the building envelope improvements, fire alarm, and HVAC improvements. So they're 90% through the design phase, so they'll be bringing us something to put out for a bid on that job soon. Their single point of entry design is in design and is 25% complete and like I said before, in the letter from the superintendent dated June 1st, he indicated that the goal is for everything to be completed by the end of the year, first quarter of 2019. They received 193 music instruments at Fort Lauderdale High School and their technology ratio met the district standard. So they had already had the ratio of at least three to one computers for students at Fort Lauderdale High School. That is what I have for the smart update and I wanted to give you a couple of quick things. I don't know if you've already received this information, but Wilton Manners Elementary recently completed the application to become a nationally certified magnet school and I want to extend thanks to you. The city made a donation that made it a possibility for them to apply, so fingers crossed they're going to get this award and hopefully Ms. Holtz will be providing that information to the commission at the end of this year or next year. They were also awarded, Wilton Manners Elementary, the United States Department Education Green Ribbon School Award for their leadership in the areas of reducing environmental impact and costs, improved health and wellness, and their efforts to educate students on the environment and sustainability. So we're really proud of them and the work that they're doing there. They are definitely a school to watch. They were also awarded the National School of Character. So they, they really take pride in making sure they're producing good citizens at Wilton Manners Elementary School and it's something to be very proud of. I don't know if you want me to tell you a little bit about some things that have happened at Sunrise Middle or Fort Lauderdale because I don't know how much time we have?
Flor, yours.
Okay. So Sunrise Middle Montessori Magnet Program also was recognized again this year as a magnet school of excellence. And if you haven't driven by Sunrise Middle recently, they were selected by Comcast to be the Comcast Cares Day recipient in April of this year. And so they have many new murals and painted benches and new outdoor classroom and the community really came out, the Comcast Cares community really came out and did some significant improvements, beautifications to the property. So if you have an opportunity to go by, I certainly encourage you to do so. And then, once again, Fort Lauderdale High School is the proud recipient of the 2018 National Magnet Schools of America Award for Magnet School of Distinction for both their pre-law and public affairs and their Cambridge program. And I had the pleasure of shaking hands with many of the students, not all of them that were there, but 105 students who obtained their Cambridge diplomas prior to their graduating from high school. So these are, these are students in their sophomore year who completed or in their junior year who completed, before they've completed all their credits for graduation from high school. It's quite impressive. And I don't know, I think Ms. Berbero always brags, but I'm gonna brag anyway. They have a 98.2 graduation rate last year, which was the highest in the entire district. Higher, not higher than Pompano Beach, but Pompano Beach is an all-magnet school. So for all kids, they serve all kids in the community and they had a 98.2 graduation rate, so that's something to be very proud of. I appreciate the partnership that the city of Wilton Manners brings to all of our schools and I thank you for your time this evening. Do you have any questions?
Alex?
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes. Thank you for being here. You, this may seem odd, but if you have your single point of entry and there is an emergency, how does the exit occur? Do you have a single exit?
No. No, there are other opportunities for students to be able to exit the campus. It is, it's a, it's a way for students and parents to check in through the school once the school is closed. So once, not during the beginning of the day when students are dropped off, not the end of the day when, when students are picked up, but during the school day when school is in operation, once that bell rings and students are in class. If, if emergency were to occur, there are exits throughout the campus that can be opened for students to leave.
In no way that those doors can be accessed during that time by somebody from the outside without?
They would, the answer to that question would be, they would have to breach a perimeter fence. Or, or a door that is locked and not used for entry. There's one entrance, I encourage you to go visit because there is one entrance. It used to be you would come up to double doors, you'd have to wait for someone to allow you to enter the building and then you would have pretty much access to the campus. It's no longer that way. There is a door that has been created before those double doors where you walk in and you are greeted at a desk where then you have to go through the star system in order to gain entry to the campus. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Berbero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes our presentations, ladies and gentlemen. We'll proceed then into comments from the public. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission. We just ask that you please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes to speak.
My name's Boyd Corbin, I live at 12 Northeast 26th Street. I'd like to know if Wilton Manners intends on continuing to steal $1.3 million per year from the utility fund to pay for 6% annual city employee raises. Fort Lauderdale, the provider of our water services, has shown no signs of ceasing to steal $20 million per year from their utility fund with disastrous results. During last night's telephone town hall, Fort Lauderdale Mayor Dean Trentalis admitted that the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant is on the brink of calamitous failure. He also repeated the lie that colored water, whether it's green, yellow, or brown, is harmless. Wilton Manners Mayor Gary Resnick says the same thing. The coloration is from organics in the water, which is also known as dirt. This mixes with the chlorine and ammonia which is added to our drinking water to form literally thousands of chemicals. Many of these chemicals have been proven harmful, even deadly to people. Only nine of these chemicals are regulated by the EPA. We don't even know what most of these chemicals are or how they affect people. We do know for a fact that there would be less of these chemicals if more dirt were filtered out of our water using GAC filtration as recommended by the 2016 Reese Report. We wouldn't even have to add ammonia to our drinking water if we did that, which would cut way back on both the amount of and types of bad chemicals in our water. So stop telling residents that colored water can't hurt us. It can. Justin Flippin wrote in his, in a newsletter the following, quote, "The commission voted to contract with Chenmore &amp; Associates, an engineering and planning firm, to study our water services and outline what options exist to seek less financially burdensome water services and associated costs. This is a prudent and important tool moving forward as we work with Fort Lauderdale to achieve more agreeable rates for water," unquote. I asked for a copy of this report and was told by the Wilton Manners City Clerk that it doesn't exist. Great. First you steal money that should be spent on maintaining our water lines, then you deny it, now you tell us that the green water won't hurt us while we pay double the water bills that other Broward County cities pay. And you refuse to talk about it during these meetings. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Do you have any questions or comments or are you just gonna sit there and like kinda half-smile? That's what I thought.
Good evening, Michael Rayner, 2607 Northeast 8th Avenue. I want to thank the commission for having consent resolution item number five on today's agenda. Thank you Commissioner Carson for bringing it forward, which would be a resolution urging the Broward County Commission to remove the specific religious exemption that would allow discrimination against just sexual orientation and gender identity and replacing it with more acceptable language that's consistent with the First Amendment. Also, I know that you're bringing a future item up later in the agenda on anti-bullying. That would also apply to the libraries in addition to parks and recs to be consistent with some of the things that HRC is asking as part of this year's MEI. You know, I think this resolution being on here is very fitting today given the proclamation for Stonewall and everything, so I just want to thanks for the timing and everything of that. Have a wonderful pride. Anyone else? Mr. Kuda?
My name is Paul Kuda and I reside at 500 Northeast 28th Street in Wilton Manners. I first wish to congratulate Michael D. Olivera, who is with us tonight, on being named as Editor-in-Chief of the Pelican Newspaper located in Pompano Beach. Michael has been the best reporter on Wilton Manners for many years, most recently as the news editor of the Wilton Manners Gazette and the Gazette will continue under a new editor. He comes from a newspaper family, his father having been a Sun Sentinel reporter who covered Wilton Manners among other cities in the 1980s. I am a big fan of the free weekly Pelican Newspaper for its solid reporting on happenings in seven northeast Broward cities, including Wilton Manners. Secondly, a front-page story in the June 6th issue of the Sun Sentinel Newspaper reported on the candidate endorsements by District 5 of the Fraternal Order of Police for, which includes all of our Broward County, for selected US congressional seats, Broward County and Circuit Court judges, state legislative seats, and Coral Springs local officials. I have always opposed the practice of police and firefighter unions endorsing certain candidates for election as a conflict of interest and an act of intimidation. I again urge local candidates not to appear before the PBA Union for an interview before this year's November election. Lastly, a majority of Broward County Commission, of the Broward County Commission, has approved placing a voter's referendum on this November's election ballot for a one cent increase to 7% in the county's sales tax for 30 years. This ost- This ostensibly would be for county-wide transportation-related improvements, initially consisting mostly of local public works, projects, without any clear vision or specificity about improving the movement of people in traffic in Broward County. There is mention of a rapid bus transit, rapid bus transit service in 2024. As I did two years ago, I plan to vote against this sales tax increase, but because it contains no real transportation plan. I thank the city commission.
Thank you, Mr. Kuta. Anyone else care to address the commission this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the comments from the public, and we'll proceed on to the consent agenda. Colleagues, you have the consent agenda before you. Are there any motions on the floor?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Newton. Is there a second to do so?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Green. Are there any objections? Seeing none, the motion carries, but we'll go through the roll call as pursuant to our charter.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
Okay. Moving right along to board appointments. Would the clerk please read the first resolution?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, appointing three members to the Recreation Advisory Board of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay. At this time, I know we have our applicants in the audience this evening. One of those individuals, Mr. Corey Kistro Mills, was out of town and did provide us all with a letter as to his whereabouts and his intent to still seek appointment. But we'll go through alphabetically, and applicants will just call, call you forward to the podium, and you'll have a couple minutes to basically address the commission and tell us why you want to serve on this board. So start with Mr. Patrick Hall.
My name is Patrick Hall. I thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak with you this evening. I've been teaching for 29 years here in Broward County, currently a physical education instructor for elementary level. I purchased my house in Wilton Manners a little over a year ago, and at that time, I've been deciding I went to get involved with the community, do some volunteer work. My first exposure to the Parks and Rec Leisure Service Department was with Ms. Bridget Pierce three years ago, summer camp. My, my son wanted to go, so I took him there and just fell in love with the program. And we've been there every year since, and usually about January, right after the winter holiday, he starts asking when summer camp starts. So needless to say, he's a happy camper this week. I think that we have some great parks here in Wilton Manners to be proud of. My personal favorite would be the Park at the Preserve. We also have the area for the children to play in, but also the adults with that particular workout area. I feel the sense of community here in Wilton Manners is wonderful. I want to be a part of that. I'd like to do whatever I can to be able to help out, and that's the reason why I'm applying for the advisory board of the Parks and Rec Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Usually, we go through if there are any questions. So at this time, colleagues, do any of you have any questions for Mr. Hall? Commissioner Carson?
Have you attended a Parks and Rec meeting?
Parks, no, ma'am, I have not. I haven't, I have not. I've had some conflicts with childcare, and that's been taken care of recently, so that will no longer be a problem. I have not attended.
Do you have, do you anticipate that in the future you have any conflicts in being able to attend?
No, ma'am, that's been resolved.
And I'll, I'll tell you, our camp program is one of the best anywhere.
It is. I agree.
So I'm glad your son enjoys that.
Anything else, colleagues? Good? Good. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
All right. Again, colleagues, you have the letter from Mr. Corey Kistro Mills. Mr. Carl Lenzar?
I am Carl Lenzar, 1465 Northeast 24th Court, and just want to talk about myself and what I do. I'm the executive assistant at the Pawl Rowell Center. I'm also part-time at Landscape Solutions, where I still do landscape designing, past president and a 10-year member of the Wilton Manners Business Association. I'm also a board member of Art Gallery 21 and a member of ENA, Eastern Neighborhood Association. So I have, was first appointed Parks, appointed to the Parks Board in 2012, and I became the chair in 2015. And during that time, I only missed one meeting, and we all know what happened at that one meeting that I missed. What I'd like to do is to continue volunteering, because I get great pleasure out of making a difference in the community and putting my strengths to good use. Gets me excited to think that I can help make a better place for future generations. I look forward to another two-year term. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Colleagues, questions?
I think you answered it.
No? No, that's good. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Carl Scher.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to be considered for the Park and Recreational Board. I'm a native of Florida, born and raised in Pensacola. I'm a shell retiree focused over my career in contracting and procurement, and my love is projects. So I'm also a recent ICU graduate from this year. And actually, listening to Patrick during that presentation, as well as Todd, I actually really fell in love with the idea of participating on the Park and Recreational Board. I think it's a fantastically well-run organization, very impressive. My partner and I moved here two years ago last month, and the following year we married, and we feel like we are in paradise. I have attended some board commission meetings. I have not attended a Park and Recreational Board meeting as of yet, although there is one for June 21st. I thought that I would have been able to answer yes if you asked that question, Commissioner Carson. But I have read the agenda that are published online, so I have a pretty good feel for what the issues are and what the standing agendas and things that are there. After reviewing the board requirements and with my background, I feel that I am very well-qualified. I have the time, the energy, and the commitment to participate on the board, and I actually believe I can add value to the board. Thank you.
Questions for the applicant colleagues? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So if everyone will please vote accordingly and pass your votes, I think, down to the manager, that'd be good.
Okay. I'll hold on to that.
Yeah. The mayor's voting via phone there. Without objection from my colleagues, I'd like to bring forward the next applicants for the next board while the city manager counts up the total. So our next resolution is appointing a member to the Economic Development Task Force, and so in order of alphabetical, we'll just call Mr. Ed Lugo forward. And Mr. Lugo, you have the podium for a few moments to tell us why you'd like to be appointed to this particular board and answer questions from, from the deus.
It's so great to be back here at City Hall. I just, to say thank you to all the people that served the city, to the commissioner, the vice mayor. And it feels, it feels very good. I'm very happy to be here. People that know me for years, I was born New York, I was raised in Puerto Rico. When I came to Wilton Manners, I came as a real estate agent many, many years ago. People thought I was Italian, and people called me all the time and to lease their homes, and I said, "No, I'm not Italian, I'm Puerto Rican." And, and I fell in love with the city. I used to live in Plantation and Pompano Beach. And then later on, I opened my resort that has my name on it, Ed Lugo Resort, that is in 246 Northeast 8th Avenue. It's next to the Manners Complex. I've been there for many, many years. And somebody asked me not long ago, a couple weeks ago, he said, "Hey, why don't you get involved in this, in this board?" I never been at a meeting there, but I never had attended one. And I said, "You'd be perfect for this position." And I said, "You know, that would be nice to get involved and put my experience traveling around the world and see different projects in other cities." You know, and I said, "Maybe the city called me for something to help and be involved," and I was, I was here for, for the city. And my job is already to bring people to the city, promote the city, and tell people how wonderful it is to stay here and go out and have fun and live here too. And that's what I'm applying for this position, and, and just thank you for the opportunity. And I'd be there for you guys anytime you need me. Thank you. Any questions?
Colleagues, questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
I have one.
Great, yes.
Can you tell me the name of the greatest B&amp;B in Broward County? If not, the U.S.?
But people ask me that question all the time, and we have so beautiful properties in, in the county and the city. They always, they're my good friends, and I really recommend all of them, and we are, we work together. When I'm full, I refer to them, and when they're full, they refer to me. We are very good friends in, in personal life. That means, I have to tell you that all of them are good. You just have to, you know, decide which one.
All of them? Wow.
Good government answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Carl Marzola, please come forward.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. You may be looking familiar to me and IDU. I used to be on the Economic Task Force a number of years and have enjoyed it. I love Wilton Manners so much, I've invested in it. You may be familiar with The Alchemist, Voulet Voe, and La Frutera. Those are all my tenants, and they're, they're doing rather well, and it's made a destination for Wilton Manners, which I'm very proud of. In addition to that, I've also brought other businesses to the drive, The Gym, My Your Manners, just to name a few. So I'm strong as far as bringing commerce into our city. I believe I'd be an excellent candidate for this task force.
Thank you, sir. Questions from my colleagues? No? Commissioner Carson?
Have you, I know you served, how many years ago were you on the board?
Two years ago? Yeah, two years ago.
And, and have you been to a meeting since that time?
I'm sorry?
Have you been to a meeting of the board since that time?
No, I have not. No, I have not.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, colleagues, if you want to switch over and vote on that one and pass your voting tabulations, and as the city manager is calculating that, I will go back to our first resolution and announce that the following have been selected. Mr. Patrick Hall, Carl Lenzar, and Carl Scher to the Recreation Advisory Board. So would there be any motions on the floor relative to...
Motion to appoint the three applicants who were...
Beckett.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Carson, second by Mayor Resnick. Any objections? Seeing none, the motion carries, but we have to do the roll call for the purpose of our charter.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
All right. And with that said, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Ed Lugo on his...
But hang on, we didn't read that resume or...
No, no, no. I know we didn't read it, Mayor, but I'm just saying that we voted, and the number is six. So at this time, I'd like to ask the city clerk to read the resolution relative to that.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, appointing one member to the Economic Development Task Force of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, to fill the unexpired term of Robert Boo, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
And colleagues, after that announcement, motion on the floor?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Carson?
Second.
By Commissioner Green?
Motion to appoint...
To appoint.
Ed Lugo.
Ed Lugo, yes.
Yep.
I understand as such. Any objections, colleagues? Seeing none, the motion carries, but the clerk will do the roll call.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
I have a question. I just wanted to know how long this unexpired term is.
It's on there somewhere. It was on our...
It's nearly a full term, but I'll...
It's almost a full term.
Almost a full term.
Okay. All right, that's close enough.
Okay. Thanks.
And Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson? Just a reminder about the ethics training and the sunshine law training that everyone will need to undergo, I think, prior to their meetings.
Yeah. So there's one next week, ladies and gentlemen, and so as you've been appointed or reappointed to your board, just as the commissioner mentioned, you do have to go through ethics and sunshine training. You may not speak to one another outside the confines of your meeting relative to business of your board, so you'll get the proper education from, I believe, our city attorney's office is conducting that training, so...
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Yeah. So you'll, you'll be in good hands if you attend that, that session. All right. Moving right along to public hearings, we have an ordinance. If the clerk would please read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Wilton Manners, Florida, amending Ordinance 2017-004, extending the moratorium on the issuance of building permits, development orders, and business tax receipts for the installation or sitting of any wireless facility as defined under Section 337.4017B Florida statutes and wireline backhaul facilities in any public rights-of-way within the City of Wilton Manners for an additional 180 days, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Very good. And as this is a public hearing, just to bring it to the floor, are there any motions?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Carson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newton. But before we proceed any further, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, so if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this particular item, you are welcome to do so, just as if we do in public comments. We just ask that you come to the podium, identify your name and address for the record. Anyone out there? Going once, twice, three times? All right. Moving right along, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Colleagues, discussion? Commissioner Green?
I am very happy with this, but eventually, we're going to have to do something on this issue. I know at least of one city, and I'm assuming there are others, that already have done something with an ordinance on this and have already permitted some installation. So, you know, the Florida Legislature did it to us again, and you all know what "did it" means. So, you know, I think after this one, we need to start working to get this settled.
Anything else, colleagues? To echo the sentiments of Commissioner Green, I know that this is the second extension, if I recall correctly. And so, Madam Manager, do we believe that we'll need the full 180 days, or do we, do we anticipate that maybe we will be coming back for that extension?
We do have a draft ordinance that the city attorney's been working on. We just needed a bit of additional time to finalize that and have time to make the presentations and go through the approval process. I, it's hard to say how many days that will take. If we adopt the ordinance prior to the end of the 180 days, this, the moratorium will end.
Automatically retires, yeah. Okay. Very good.
Just related to that, Justin, if I may, Southwest Ranch has approved an ordinance last week, I believe, and that could serve as a decent model for us as well. So there are a few cities that, in Broward County especially, that are approving these. So there, there might be some good... The, um, so there, there might be some good models to use. I'll work with, uh, the city attorney's office with respect to this as well.
Okay. Very good. All right. And if there's no further discussion, are there any objections to the motion before us? Seeing none, the motion carries, as does the ordinance, but we will do the roll call nonetheless.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mayor Resnick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
All right. Uh, we have no unfinished business before us. Reports from boards and administrative officials. Um, Madam Manager?
Um, not much to report. Did want to remind everybody and extend an invitation that this Saturday is our annual, um, Stonewall event on Wilton Drive, beginning at 3:00, and the parade will be at 4:00. Thank you.
Parade is at 4:00?
Yes. 5:00.
5:00.
5:00.
5:00.
I was told 4:00.
Yeah.
Dad, make sure you be there in time.
Yeah, just...
We have to be there at 2:30. It's a buffer.
Be there or be square.
Your car is leaving at...
Bye. Thank you, Madam Manager. Um, City Attorney?
Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. I have nothing to report, other than what's in the backup and to pass along Kerry's regards, but do appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good. Well, we know, uh, in his absence, we're in good stead and we appreciate you being here this evening. All right, new business. Uh, we have a lien reduction request. Um, so, Madam Manager, do you want to tee us up on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Um, we've received a lien reduction request from the property owner of the property located at 2991 Northeast 6th Avenue, which was issued a notice of violation for lack of parking lot striping in August of 2016. That issue was brought to the special magistrate in November of that year, at which time the magistrate provided a compliance date of December 4th, 2016, for compliance, after which a daily fine of $150 would be assessed. That property did not come into compliance until March 24th of 2018, a period of 472 days. There's now a lien on the property totaling $70,950. I believe there is a representative, uh, for the property here to, uh, make a reduction request.
Very good. Thank you, uh, Madam Manager. All right, at this time, we're happy to bring you forward. We just asked for, uh, that you provide us with your name and address for the record and make your case.
Thank you so much. Um, it's been a lovely experience, by the way, sitting here and listening to all this wonderful things, uh, going on in the city. I, um, I don't have any fancy speeches. Um, I just want to speak from the heart.
Name and address.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I got overwhelmed. Sean Paul Powell is my name. Uh, 2991 Northeast, uh, 6th Avenue, Wilton, Wilton Manners. Um, I, uh, acquired, uh, this property from a gentleman by the name of Tommy Manino. Um, I believe, I know time flies fast, but I believe it was five years ago. He actually is, uh, holding the mortgage for, I'm going to be totally honest with the, with the Commissioner here. He's, uh, holding the mortgage. His lawyer put everything together. Um, I pay him monthly. Um, any letter, letters or anything from the city actually went to his lawyer. And I never received that stuff for, I don't know the dates that you just said, but I didn't receive it for a long time. I know the code enforcement came and spoke to someone. They said they spoke to someone at the front door that said he was the owner. I don't know. There's a lot of guys or bums out there that hang out, um, on 6th Avenue. Um, anyways, eventually, um, I found out that there was, there was, the, the lawyer sent it, um, contacted someone, one of my assistants, and then I got the information. I called the city and they're like, "We're sorry, we put the lien into the county yesterday or missed it by one day." I said, um, and I didn't know anything about it, so I hired in January, uh, January 17th, um, of last year, I hired, uh, someone to, uh, do the seal coding for me and the, the lines and pull the permit. And I have, I have documentation on all of this. He literally couldn't do it. One year, he drug me along trying to get a permit. He was incapable of doing that. I, I never realized that the lien, I thought when they put it into the county that that's what it was. It was whatever the lien was, but I didn't know it was going every day. Else I would have fired the guy and got someone else. Anyways, January, yeah, 18 this year, I said, "I had enough. I hired someone else." They got the permit for me. I did the work. Everything was taken care of. Um, and I, and then, um, I realized that there was a big lien. Anyways, I come to you on my hands and knees to beg for forgiveness. Um, I know ignorance of the law is not, is not, uh, an excuse. I'm not going to use that as, as an excuse. Um, I, I am very active in the community. I do a lot of, uh, I do, I have a sound and lighting company, and I do a lot of work for the drive. Um, if there's anything that I can do, I'm just trying to help out. If I do anything that I can do for the city, as far as donating any of my time or my services, I'd be more than happy. Once again, I beg for forgiveness and I beg for a lien reduction. Um, just based on, uh, this incompetent contractor that I hired first, and like I said, once I hired the second one, he did the right thing. And, um, I paid all, everything that I had to do and, and my building's up to code and, and I, I appreciate the, the city working with me as far as, as my, um, my penalties pretty, pretty much. Um, but, uh, thank you so much. Um, can I, can you ask any questions? I mean, I'm open for anything.
We will. And at this, this time, if you, if you're done making your case before us, we'll open up our floor and...
Sure, sure. That's fine.
So, colleagues, do we have questions, uh, for the gentleman? Commissioner Carson, nice to you.
Thank you for your commitment to the city. You purchased the property in 2012, is that correct?
Uh, could, if that's what the, if that's what the county records state, yes.
Do you recall when you purchased the property?
Uh, it could have been '12. It could have been '12 or '13.
You, you probably would have had, I'm concerned because you would have had a closing and usually there's a...
I, if I looked at the records, I could tell you the specific date, but I, I didn't have that. Right now, I didn't know I was going to be asked that, that question. But it has been five, five years or so, so between '12 and '13, correct.
And you, did you happen to ever read the lien? Because it's very, it's very clear as to the increase of the fine if you don't pay.
The lien on the closing, you mean?
No, the, the lien that you're speaking for, asking for forgiveness. You know, the actual document, notice of violation.
I mean, I haven't, I haven't received any documentation on that, on the lien. I've never received a lien documentation.
When you, and maybe I'm not using the right word, when you, um, got notice to restripe your lot, from, how did you find out that you had to restripe? I mean, that's...
I found out because, uh, the lawyer's assistant knows my assistant and, uh, told her, and then I pretty much, uh, ran to the city and said, "What's going on?" And then I found out that there was a violation on the, on the, on the property.
And did you look at that violation?
I just saw that it needed to be done. I didn't, no, I didn't read specifically, no. I just knew that I was in violation and I needed for something to be done, so I just took steps to do that.
Do you have other properties in Wilton Manners?
No. No.
Part of my concern is always, as a business person and somebody who is in charge of your...
Building.
Building and your finances, and particularly you have a mortgage, uh, it, it's so important to read, and particularly when you have a, a problem or a lien on the property, if you don't look at the document at some point and just assume, uh, based on goodwill, uh, that you have to pay it, um, I, I just really, I, I hope going forward, you'll read things and it also, uh, you know, talks about daily fines and that sort of thing and, uh...
To be honest, I thought that whenever they recorded the lien to this, to the county, which I know they did, um, that, that's what it was. It was that, whatever that lien was. I didn't know it was an ongoing, uh, thing. That's what, that's what I badly assumed,
And you got a building permit, a permit to stripe and everything this, when you did that?
Yes, yes. A year after, I tried with the first contractor. I hired one contractor.
Right. And, and so when you had that first contractor, you still thought it wasn't, that's why you didn't rush to do anything? Because it, you just thought it was...
No, I was, yeah, I was waiting for him to get my permit. I hired him. I gave him money. I hired him and he kept on going. And two months later, he'd come back, "Oh, they want this, this and that." I'm like, "Okay, here it is." He would come back. I guess he just wasn't a, a good guy to get a permit with the city because my second guy got it in two weeks.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah.
Colleagues, any other questions?
Uh, just one question.
Commissioner Newton.
You had me getting, you know, going on your side until you tell me that you think one of our employees went there and talked to a bum in front of your office.
Well, there's a lot of people that...
I know, but that's terrible. That's a terrible thing to say, that you think we're that incompetent to give it to somebody just laying on the side of your building?
No, he didn't, no, he didn't give it. I don't think he gave it to him. He just spoke to the person.
Just, just...
I understand.
And, and, and you're right. Ignorance is not a reason to, to do this.
I know.
And I'm telling you, I, I just understand how someone can sit there for a year and hire someone and wait a year to get something done. I don't know, I bet you no one in this room has done that.
I didn't know that. I was ongoing. I didn't know every day was...
I'm just telling you, my thoughts is, I would never stand for somebody that I want something done and you knew there was some fine going on and you waited a year on someone to get your striping done. Uh, that, that amazes me that you'd wait that long. If they didn't do it in a week, I'd be calling someone else. So I, I'm just, I, I'm sorry. I just, I can't believe some of the things that you let go after you knew. That's what bothers me. You know, maybe the fines before you found out, I might be able to forgive those, but from the day you knew, just because you decided not to read it or find out what piece of paper that you should have read or even asked a question to somebody in the city?
I put too much trust, I put too much trust in people. That's probably the problem. I put too much trust in them. I trust people.
I would talk to the city, uh, city staff. Okay. Any other questions for the, uh, the quester? No?
I do have, uh, just, Justin, um, how long have you had your business in the city?
I'm sorry?
The mayor's asking how long you've had your business in the city.
Uh, since I, I bought it, I would say five years, five, six years.
Are you a resident of the city?
I live in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay. How many, approximately, how many people do you employ?
Uh, some, subcontract between four and eight people a week. I have, uh, two...
Uh, you have no direct employees?
I have, I don't have any full-time employees, but subcontract. I, on a, a job-to-job basis is what I do. I do, whenever I get jobs, I, I hire them. I don't have that consistent situation where I can have full-time employees.
Hey, no, I get it. All right. Thank you.
You good, Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question for staff if they're coming back?
Yeah, yeah. We're going to go into deliberation next.
Yeah, so do I, Gary.
Go ahead, Mayor, go.
Um, just, I don't know if Julio's there or...
Yes, Julio's here. He's coming up.
No, I just wanted to ask, from the staff's perspective, is there any extenuating circumstances here or anything, uh, you know, that we should know about this case that was not revealed from the applicant?
Uh, Julio Dallick, Co-Compliance Supervisor. The only thing I, I see as far as what he was, um, mentioning, and we were sending it to a different registered agent prior to the date of March, um, I believe 27th, which it says on SunBiz, there was an address change. Uh, so the, the mail was going to, uh, the attorney, as he states. Now, uh, that address has changed, as far as the registered agent has changed, to a Charlene Sheng Powell. That's the only thing I believe that he probably didn't allude to in reference to this situation.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, you have a question?
Okay, so you believe that the first time he, he found out, being the new owner, was maybe March 27th or thereabouts?
I, I don't know. All I can state is that, uh, up until February, which was the hearing that everything was finalized and it was certified, up until that date, all of our mailings were going to a different registered agent. That's all I can state.
And nobody showed up for that meeting?
No.
But in accordance with the record, it, what, what was on the record is where they were, the notices were going.
Correct. And we did receive service.
Right, there's notice, but not, uh, yeah. Now, how much a day is it?
Um, it was $150 per day.
Commissioner Newton, are you good?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Carson or Commissioner Green, any questions for staff or, no? Mr. Dill, I have a good question for you then.
Yes, sir.
The new registered agent, as of March 27th, last name is Powell, same as the applicant. I'm presuming there's a relationship there. Do we know if it's...
I, I believe he just stated, uh, that's his wife.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Newton.
Um, when was it coming to compliance? What date?
It came into compliance on March 24th, 2018, so when everything was finalized out, when he finally, uh, closed out the permit.
27th of 17?
So, timeline us up. March 27th, the agent changed, but...
17 of, like, of 17, and then March 24th of this year is when he came into compliance?
Yeah, we finished everything up, uh, at the February 4th, sorry, January 4th hearing of 2017.
Okay, that's where I...
On May 30th, 2017, there was a permit application for seal coat and striping, um, and that was closed out eventually.
Okay.
Then on January 11th, 2018, there was another application for seal coat and striping.
Right.
And that was closed out on the 23rd, uh, March 23rd, 2018. That's what the city records indicate.
Right, because the first time he didn't do it within six months, so it expired.
I guess.
Okay. That'd be some more sense. Okay.
You're not following or...
No, I just want to, I don't, is "I guess," does that mean yes?
I don't know. I can only, I'm only giving you the, the opening and close dates. I don't know the intricate details within that.
Do you know whether or not one expires after six months?
It, it typically does, however, I don't know if that's the specific case in this situation as to why. I don't know if he abandoned the application. Um, it needs to, permit needs to be issued prior to it expiring, and I believe that an application also, uh, does expire after a specific amount of time, and Ms. Moore can, uh, elaborate on that if you like.
I, I guess.
Okay.
Director Moore, we guess we'll let you hear, hear from you.
Roberta Moore, Community of Outland Services Director. Uh, the first application, the first building permit application for the seal coat and restripe was submitted by Florida Blacktop on January 11th of 2018. That per, no, I'm sorry, hold on.
No, no.
The first application was submitted on...
March 24th.
May 30th of 2017.
Okay.
That was denied. No activity was taken on that. On January 11th of 2018, another permit was submitted. This was a brand-new permit that was submitted. Um, that permit was also denied. And then on February 7th of 2018, it was resubmitted, so the 2018 permit was resubmitted, and that was the permit that was ultimately issued and finalized.
Do, do you know the reasons why they were denied?
Yes. Do you want to know the 2017 permit?
Yes.
So the 2017, uh, permit, that one was, uh, they need to provide a survey, uh, provide the parking layout per section, uh, Article 135, uh, provide, identify the landscape and irrigation per Article 150, and provide the contract agreement identifying the correct business address, location, provide a site plan for the property showing the current site improvements, and, um, again, provide a site plan showing the size of spaces, drainage, landscape, along with irrigation. So those were, that was the initial submittal that ultimately, um, had no activity taken, so that one was essentially voided out.
So that, was that by the owner or was that by the...
It's a commercial property, so it always has to be submitted by a contractor.
Okay, so a contract, okay. Just making sure.
Correct. So in 2018, a new permit was submitted. For reference, the 2017 permit was WM17-000598. The 18 permit, WM18-000028. Um, that permit, the initial denials, was for, uh, providing drainage and the property setbacks to the side, and per Article, uh, 150-040E, uh, provide additional landscaping when striping the parking lot. Uh, that was submitted on January 11th of 2018, and then it was resubmitted again on February 7th, and at that point in time, the two outstanding permits were addressed, and the permit was issued on, uh, February 14th.
Colleagues, any other need for clarification from our director, or are we good?
Good.
All right, thank you, Ms. Moore, appreciate it. All right, let's deliberate amongst ourselves, then. Any... Julio, are we, are we good?
I'm good with, with Julio.
Colleagues, are we good with, uh, yep? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so... Any recommendations, any motions on the floor?
Well, I, I certainly, uh, appreciate the effort, particularly in January, even though it was a year later, I know that in January 2018, there was, uh, good, good effort, so, we came into compliance, I forgot to look at that, but, uh, March 24th, 2018.
24th.
Yeah.
So, 27 was the first change in the annual.
Yep, so, um, I certainly, uh, am comfortable forgiving, uh, January 11th through March 24th, uh, which certainly isn't a, a lot of money, but, uh, the balance, uh, I'm open for discussion.
I, I have a...
That dollar figure means...
I don't have a dollar figure, but I'll tell you, out of all things that we do, and we get businesses for, this is one of the ones that I really hate the most, to be honest with you. I mean, it's, it's, it's striping, I, I own property, or I did, I just sold, and, uh, it was funny how the, another city that I had property in would come and bother me about my striping and having a seal coat, which made it hotter, and it's already hot down here, so black topping and then putting striping, I see the striping, but not the black topping makes it hotter, uh, if everybody did it, and then you go to that city and you look at their, front of their building, and they need to be restripped, so it was kind of, uh, funny, but, I don't know why we just don't let some people just stripe, and there are other things that go along with it, like the problems that come up, and I don't know if a lot of you know this, but, in businesses, if you have to re-stripe, and they say you have to seal coat, while you're doing that now, that clicks into another thing now, if you don't have the right drainage, now you gotta fix your drainage, and that could cost you anywhere from twenty to fifty, a hundred thousand dollars, and then, and if you don't have enough, uh, foliage around it, then you have to do that. So, it's very expensive for, for such a small thing to begin with, and I think we're gonna work on that some while we're redoing, uh, our code. Uh, that's not the situation here, but I'm more forgiving on striping than I am for landscaping, or a building falling apart, or, or something like that. But I, I still can't, still caught my craw a little bit here about, it takes you a year and a half to put striping down, because somebody you hired was incapable of doing it in the first place, and you didn't do anything about it for a year, that bothers me a lot. I will forgive some, the percentage, I don't know, uh, but you gotta be a lot smarter. I'm sorry, uh, a, a year and a half is just way too long to let it go, and, uh, so, I'll go with whatever the rest of the commission wants to do, but, um, I'm definitely willing to reduce this.
Commissioner Green.
I have a little, uh, sorry.
Mayor, I'll get you right, right after Commissioner Green, okay?
After Tom.
Um, I, I wanna make sure I understand, when, uh, there was an effort, finally, to do this striping, was there also a problem with vegetation and other things, or was it just that the, they did not give you that information?
Cannot talk from here.
Unfortunately, can't, can't talk, apologize, but...
They can't come up here if he wants to ask him the question, you just can't do it from there.
I think staff is getting ready to respond to Commissioner Green's question.
That's good.
I mean, I wanna find out what the problem was with the drainage and the vegetation.
Yeah, considering that was...
Commissioner, I apologize, I do not have the file in my hand, um, I don't know if landscaping really became an issue, knowing the site, they may have had to have added a few plants, but nothing to redo the complete landscaping for.
Okay, and the drainage, uh...
It was part of the plans, it was, it was identified on the plans that were resubmitted.
Okay.
But not the first time, it's the second time.
So, it was just the, correct, it was just the information.
Okay, so, it just wasn't on there?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's better. Thanks.
Anything else, or you want me to, you're good? Mayor Resnick, you wanted to speak?
Uh, thanks, yeah, I just, you know, we, it's a situation here where, you know, it's unfortunate that it took, uh, as long as it did for this, uh, property owner to come into compliance, and I'm not necessarily, you know, I, I don't generally forgive, basically, ignorance, or just, uh, you know, no good reason for delay, but, you know, on the other hand, our goal of code enforcement is compliance, it's not penalty, and there has been compliance, it took longer than we would have liked, and longer than it should have taken, but it has been, it has occurred, and, uh, so I, I'd be comfortable with doing what we normally do in these situations, and reducing it to 25% of the accrued fine.
With, plus staff costs, if I understand you correctly?
Uh, yeah, plus, uh, the costs incurred by the city.
And the time for payment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, ninety, ninety days.
Uh, thirty, I mean, I'd ask the applicant, but generally thirty days.
Mr. Powell, just, uh, we're gonna, at some, why don't we bring you forward, because as we deliberate, we're going to, uh, seek payment within a certain period of time, so, the mayor has discussed a, a period of, uh, what was it, thirty days, Gary, you said?
I don't have, I think it was seventy, well, the total, I think, with city costs, was about seventy-one thousand dollars accrued. So, I don't know offhand what the 25% would be.
So, so, the deliberation is, if we, if we were to make a reduction of 25%, we generally set a time period in which that must be paid, otherwise you go back to where you were, so, is there a time period that you could have, that, that would be more feasible for you to, uh, make payment?
I mean, it is summer months now, it's a slow season, um, if I could just have as long as I could, I mean, maybe, hopefully, ninety days if possible.
Can I have a question?
Should we do a payment plan, like, uh, I don't know, if, if the commission ultimately accepts 25% to a certain amount per month, up to, like, maybe three months or so, would that work?
I don't even know what's that, what that number is, I'd have to, I think it's, uh, I don't know what the total fine would be with the reduction, is it 25% of seventy thousand? Or 25%?
Yeah, no, 25% of seventy-five, seventy-one thousand, whatever it is.
Reducing it 75%.
Yeah, Leanne, that's, uh, 25, 75% reduction.
Okay, um, that would be, uh...
Let's, I had, let's go ahead.
Seventeen, seventeen thousand...
Eight, you said eighteen, seventeen?
Seventeen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, there are staff and administrative costs in the amount of three hundred, thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
Four, three divided, three divided by seventeen is...
About six thousand a month, about three thousand.
Could we do a payment panel, a payment plan over six months, possibly?
Deliberate, and, all right. You have another follow-up question to the afternoon?
No, 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 I just, I have no problem with that, it looks like he's willing to do it, and, uh, you know, it's not just no, or something, so, I, I don't have a problem with that, six months, as long as you stay on time.
So, seven, what was it, Leanne, I'm sorry, seventeen, roughly eighteen thousand?
Seventeen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Oh, my God.
Plus three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, staff costs.
So, wait, so eighteen thousand, approximately.
Somebody should be adding this up, and not us.
Yeah, maybe no three thousand dollars a month.
I'm getting coming eighteen thousand, seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents, but that's my rough hand.
It's three, about three thousand.
I'm clarifying, that's guy right there.
Over six months, about three thousand.
So, in the, uh, all right, so the, the lien, I just have a question then for staff, or for the city attorney, would the lien, the lien would not be released until the full payment was made, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Can we donate that money to, no, the city?
The lien would not be released.
I mean, I'm fine with that, of course, if, uh, if the applicant wants to pay it earlier, then the city would release the lien earlier.
Right, 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 right. Of course, absolutely.
And what happens if payments are missed?
It goes back to the full amount.
I mean, like, if he's gonna have several months, if he misses the third month, then it's going back?
That's usually what happens, I thought, no?
Well, I, no one's asked.
Well, and, and colleagues, we, we can do set payment plans, or we can say that the, there's a total amount that needs to be paid within that six-month period of time, how the applicant makes that payment, it'd be up to him, he's got the deadline, um, meet the deadline or not, if, if the deadline passes, we're back to square one.
Yeah.
My only issue with that is, I, I wouldn't wanna wait six months, with the potential of having this reduced, and not receiving any payments, and I, I guess it's the same effect, but, uh, I would like to have some payments made at some point, before knowing that the payments aren't gonna come in.
Half of it in three months?
So, you want, want a stipulation of half of it, Commissioner Green has just said, half of it within the three-month period of time must be paid?
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
So, that will, that will, that will demonstrate and satisfy your concern, correct, Mayor?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, colleagues, so we, we've sort of circled around this, so we've got the discussion of...
No motion either, right?
No, there's not a motion on the floor.
Not a motion, yeah.
So, does anyone...
I'll turn that into a motion, if, uh, if someone can...
If, I'll translate, Mayor.
Put the amount out there again.
All right, so there's a motion by the mayor, uh, for, uh, payment of, uh, 75% reduction of, of the total amount, which yields us a total of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents, staff costs being three hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, total of eighteen thousand, seven, seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents, to be paid within six months, half of which must be paid within three months.
For the whole, it'll go revert, revert back to seventy thousand.
Or forfeits back to the, the total, total amount. Does that encapsulate what you were trying to get at, Mayor?
Yeah, that's it.
Perfect, there's a, that motion is on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Newton, discussion, colleagues.
I'm, I'm fine with this, but, uh, I think it's terrible that one of the entrances to the city of Wilton Mansions, uh, had to have this lack of compliance for such a long, long time, for this long list of reasons, and so, um, I'm very disappointed it took this long, and, uh, I, I wanna let you know, the, the commission seems to be in a very charitable mood tonight, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioner Carson?
I just, I wanna make sure that the applicant understands part of what we've said, um, I'm just gonna go over it briefly, the full amount theoretically would be reduced to eighteen thousand, seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents, half of that, so about nine thousand, would have to be paid within three months.
So, three thousand a month?
Correct, or whatever, could be two and one, as long as it's...
As long as half is met within three months.
Half is met within three months.
However.
And then the additional three months, you would have to pay the balance, so you'd have six months, if that's not, if you don't do that...
Yeah, I understand.
Then the lien gets back on.
I have to, I don't have a choice.
Yeah, the lien goes, the lien's never gonna be released, but we would have stopped, you wouldn't have any more fines.
And you said the last three months, as long as I do three thousand a month for six months, I'm fine, correct?
Thereabouts, thereabouts, yeah.
Okay.
Well, a little over.
A little over, a little, you know, twelve bucks.
Three thousand, twenty-seven dollar, whatever it is.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Further deliberation, Commissioner...
Just one more thing, just to tell them that, I'll, I'll let you know right now, if, if you come back with any kind of lien, I will, I guarantee you, I will not reduce it one penny.
Okay, no problem.
Especially if you don't take care of this, but, you know, get, like he said, Commissioner Green said, we're being very gracious tonight, 'cause usually 25% is what we take off, not give, so...
Thank you, thank you.
Any, any other additional comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second, are there any objections to it? Seeing none, the motion carries, but clerk will do the roll call.
Mayor Resnick? Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Carson?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Flippin?
Yes.
All right, uh, we had an added item of business, Commissioner Carson, you wanted to bring forward a city anti-bullying policy for leisure services?
Yes, sir, in this, let me just read this real quickly, um, there is, uh, an opportunity for city services, for our city, to have city services, youth bullying prevention policies. This category will reward cities, and this is for the MEI, with a maximum of two points for implementing policies that prohibit, and I'm more concerned about the policy than the two points, implementing policies that prohibit bullying on the express basis of sexual orientation and gender identity in all youth-facing city facilities and services. These policies should cover, for example, the city's parks and recreation department, library programs, and any other department or service that incorporates young people. While most cities do not have direct control of anti-bullying school district policies, uh, cities do have the direct authority to implement policies that explicitly prohibit bullying on the grounds of sexual orientation and gender identity in its programs and services. So, I would like to see that codified in our policies, if, uh, if there's agreement with the commission.
Okay, Commissioner Carson, I appreciate bringing that forward, and just for everyone else's edification, uh, the commissioner mentioned the MEI, that's the Municipal Equality Index, uh, for those of you out there that may not know what that acronym stands for, uh, it is a, a tool that is utilized in analyzing, uh, cities and determining, uh, their inclusiveness and how they rate, uh, with, I believe the Human Rights Campaign is, uh, the one that administers that program. Colleagues, uh, any, any thoughts about what the commissioners brought forward, I don't, I wouldn't object to that at all.
All right, not at all, I think it's a good thing.
So, so, uh, matter of manager, I don't know how it should or ought be codified, whether it's resolution or administrative policy.
We typically handle that as an administering and operating policy, as well as, um, conducting training among all of our employees to ensure that we, that we carry out that policy.
Okay, so I think there's enough direction from the commission, but Commissioner Carson, I appreciate...
But we'll provide a copy also.
We'd like to see, yes, thank you.
Appreciate you bringing them, the item forward.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Uh, request for placement of items on next meeting agenda, anyone have anything specific? Nope, reports from elected officials, uh, in deference to the mayor, he's traveling, I'd like to start off with the mayor, if I may.
I appreciate it, I will see everybody back at, uh, Stonewall, so, uh, hopefully we'll have good weather, and, uh, thanks for allowing me to participate via telephone tonight.
Of course, all right, thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, Commissioner Carson?
I'm good, I, I wanna thank you, gentlemen, this is, we're going into one of our biggest celebrations and our biggest, uh, economic impacts, uh, last year we did a study on the economic impact of, uh, Stonewall, and we are positively economically impacted because of so many people who visit and enjoy, this ends up being a long weekend, but I hope that you will be here and celebrate with us, and have your friends and family be here, and just remember to be safe, and, uh, call us if you need anything, and, uh, happy Pride Week, Month.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Green?
Wanted to mention, um, that, uh, on the 23rd, I went to LGBT Dynamics in the Workplace Workshop, uh, put on by the, I think, L-B-G-T Chamber, I hope it was, um, and, uh, it was, uh, interesting, uh, to see, uh, large corporations being there, like a banking system and things of this type, uh, that they are concerned about this, and, uh, it was, uh, reassuring to hear that, uh, the term LGBT Plus could be used.
Yes.
And, uh, I had not heard that, that often, uh, but, gosh, uh, it certainly makes it easier to summarize, uh, some of the, uh, the groups of people we're talking about. I was amazed that when one of the psychologists was giving a speech on this category, uh, he presented about fifteen different groups, and, uh, after he said that, everyone started just saying L-B-G-T Plus, and it probably cut, uh, fifteen minutes off, uh, the workshop. The next day, I went to a climate, uh, summit, uh, for Broward County, uh, our Assistant City Manager was also there, it was out in Davie, and, uh, it's always, uh, fun to visit a place that's called Longboat Key, because there it is in the middle of Davie, but at one time, it was an island, uh, in the Everglades, uh, before the Everglades were drained. It, uh, was kind of, uh, interesting to hear different, uh, concerns by different cities in the county, uh, I brought up one that the Vice Mayor had mentioned to me, uh, and that was, uh, it's going to become, uh, even more difficult to get under our already low bridges, uh, because of the rise in sea level. Uh, we have some places in Wilton Mansions that at high tide, uh, you cannot get under them, and, uh, what is high tide now, uh, probably will be the norm in the future. We talked, uh, about things such as higher seawalls, um, and, uh, I mentioned, uh, this new development that we're going to have in Wilton Mansions, uh, that will be a four-story, uh, building with fifteen units in it, uh, but there will be no apartments on the ground floor, uh, because it's on the river, and they're planning for the future. Uh, they also are going to repair and build a seawall, uh, two feet higher, which is always good for them, uh, perhaps the adjacent property owners are not, uh, thrilled with that. A couple of cities have already started building their roadways higher, which, again, is a problem for some of the adjacent properties, uh, but if you're flooded out, the highway... But if you're flooded out, the highway might still be open. So, it was, it was amazing. What concerned me the most was hearing that we are going to have to develop in Broward County a whole new freshwater system, meaning drinking water. And the wells are all going to have to be built in western Broward County. The, the east will all be saltwater intrusion. I mean, one of the greatest systems in the county, in my opinion, is Pompano. Well, boy, have they got to start planning because they are already where the saltwater is beginning to intrude. And if people think their water bills are high now, wait till the hundreds of millions of dollars have to be spent on this. You're not going to have a water problem because the ocean is over your house. You're going to have it perhaps because there's no water to drink. So, it was kind of eye-opening. I went to a state MPO meeting. It was a meeting of the, the state of Florida's POs and even the national meeting. I forgot to write down every letter in the National Association's name because the name is NARC. And I felt funny going to a meeting that was called NARC, but it's a National Association of something. Anyway, a friend of mine, a good friend from Davie, Brian Coletka, was re-elected to the NARC Board and was elected as Vice Chair of the Florida Association. And I was happy for that for several reasons. He deserves it. And when we're asking for money in the future, it doesn't hurt to know someone that's a decision-maker there. Want to again plug the upcoming Wilton Drive Streetscape meeting or a roundtable. And I really urge people to attend this because it's so easy to not attend and then later complain that it wasn't done correctly. So, please try. And I'm, you know, again, the old story, preaching to the choir because many of you will be there. And finally, I do want to wish everyone a fun time for the weekend, and I hope you enjoy it.
Now, that, isn't that pretty?
Yes. I thought you wanted something said about it.
No, well, I, I do. I think that's wonderful.
Okay. I think you can do that. But I, last thing I wanted to say on that, have a great time and have fun. Be careful. But most importantly, remember when you go to a festival or a holiday, why it's being held to begin with. It's not just to have more drinks. It's to remember what some very, very brave people did decades ago in New York. And so, I hope you enjoy it and you remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Newton?
Yes. Last night, I was at an event for the Wilton Management Association with the, with Mayor Flippin, I mean Vice Mayor Flippin. And, oops. And we had a good time. There's a lot of new business. There's quite a few new businesses there. And it was a really nice event that they put on there. And what a, what a great timing to have it during Pride Month. And it was very much appreciated by everyone. And I too say that this is really a great event for the city of Wilton Manners. I don't care if you're straight or gay. It is a really nice event. There's a lot of things. And like you said, it's not about just having a good time there. It's about what it's all about and why we're doing this. And if you go to all the booths and you go down, half the booth will, something that will be in with the booth tells you part of Stonewall and what happened in New York and what was going on. So, like you said, Commissioner Green, it's nice to look to and see why we're here and not just, you do have a few drinks and throw down some cheeseburgers. So, enjoy yourself, have a good time, be safe, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, sir. Just a couple of quick items. The city of Wilton Manners hosted the Broward League of Cities Monthly Board of Directors Meeting, and I just wanted to obviously thank my colleague, Commissioner Newton, for joining me at that, as well as our Assistant City Manager Pamela Landy, and to just recognize our Leisure Services Department for coming together and our faith, our city clerk for arranging all the food and the preparations that were involved. You know, it really takes an effort on city, city staff's behalf to host a get-together of all the elected officials from across our county. I generally attend these meetings on a monthly basis, but I'm glad we're able to host them here in Wilton Manners. And my hat is always off to our staff that make sure that we welcome everyone here and all the hard work that was done to make that event a success. Yeah, Commissioner Green, you, you pointed out the LGBT plus acronym, and I can opine for a while, but I won't. But yes, it has been an interesting journey with identifying what used to be, when I was a young person, the gay and lesbian community. And then we became the GLBT community, then the LGBT community. And then, of course, there's a lot of other groups that identify with the larger community. And for inclusive purposes and not making that acronym so long that it loses perhaps its understandability to the general public, the LGBT plus has become a new mark, demarcator of the community. In fact, it's used by now the CVB as well in our marketing worldwide. And so, I think that that's great, that we understand that from this commission and that we, we share that explanation with the community at large. The streetscape that was mentioned, the flyer was mailed, I believe, to every single household in Wilton Manners. So, to the effectiveness of our staff, once again, I'm always, I always like giving credit where credit is due, making sure that every household in Wilton Manners is aware of this streetscape event, plus our social media outreach and all the other ways that we try to communicate with the general public. I'm looking forward to a very positive workshop event for the future of the streetscape program on Wilton Drive. Pride Month is also, you know, something that we appreciate in the fact of the history of it all. Yep, it began about drag queens and patrons of a certain bar standing up against law enforcement and the police brutality that once existed in New York City. But I love looking to our law enforcement and knowing that they stand with our community in so many ways, not just symbolically, but also.
Symbolically, too?
No, well, I'm going to get to that. Not just symbolically, but in policies and in practices. And, and a couple of those things that our, our city does during Pride Month is we changed the social media and the shield of our city police department. And so, you may notice on Facebook and other social media outlets that the shield is now in front of the rainbow flag shield itself. And it, so the colors of our police department reflect that community that they are serving and represent. And in fact, they even passed out wonderful Pride pins, again, with the shield of our police department on a rainbow pin, which I think, again, is just important to demonstrate that, as I like to often say in Wilton Manners, that rainbow flies in our city, but because we don't care what color of the rainbow you most identify with, you are welcomed in Wilton Manners. And we, from this dais to our police department, we're going to make sure that you know that. And so, we appreciate it, our law enforcement, what they do. Lastly, but not least, after you enjoy the festivities of this week, after you enjoy Stonewall and the parade and the festival, Sunday is an important day as well. It's Father's Day. So, I just want to wish all the dads out there a very happy Father's Day. And those that even take the place of fathers play a significant role in all of our lives. And so, happy Father's Day to those celebrating that. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned.
Thank you. Okay, I want one pen bag.